Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Abington School Committee meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. And I would ask everybody if they could please stand for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we're going to open this up for our hearing of visitors. If we have any, Oliver, I think we'll call on you. What you'd have to do is raise your hand, I think, in the chat. And then we will. Don't see anyone. Does anyone else? Am I missing anything?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. So we'll close out the hearing of visitors portion and move on to the reading and approval of records, the January 4th, 2022 school committee meetings minutes. If you can review and if somebody wants to make a motion to approve, that would be great.
I'll make a motion.
Second it?
Second it?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
So next, we have the report of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, which is the side department, Science Department is going to speak and Mr. Kiderick.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody. I'm gonna share my screen with you. I hope host disabled participants screen sharing. I think I need Oliver here.
So.
I just made you co-host, so you should be good to go now.
Then I don't have to say anything. While we are waiting, I can say that it's also available online and the committee members have in their packets. Those packets are out published online.
I can see on the screen now too, just.
So can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. I just need to move you guys so that I can read. So, all right. So I was asked to put together some slide sets on the Science Department and basically some of our strengths, some things that we're in places where I think we can improve. And then there was also some information as far as student engagement in science classes, specifically AP and honor level classes and some of the results of the testing there. And then the final question that was posed to me was to discuss or explain how the science teachers kind of advocate for the different science classes that we offer at Abington High School. So the first thing that I'd like to talk about is strengths of the department. I believe that the science staff at the high school has very varied professional experiences and educational backgrounds in the areas of science and technology. And the greater, the better thing to for the Science Department is we were pretty well together. We kind of bang off of each other well in those areas. Obviously, like not only the Science Department and the other math and history departments and English departments. I think the staff has done a tremendous job in showing their flexibility through remote hybrid and in-school instruction and even continued changes and modifications that have been going on. One of the things that the pandemic has caused, which I think has turned into a strength, is where Science Department is able to engage students in various scientific inquiries through various online tools and virtual labs. And finally, and most important, I think, and this credit should also go to the students of Abington High School. We continue to perform above the average in MCAS and AP assessments versus our state and global counterparts. Some areas where I think we, the Science Department overall, can do a better job or improve in certain areas, like I discussed with the MCAS data. I think the Science Department needs to kind of look at the results of MCAS and better align our instruction with areas of scientific need based on the students' performance results. In addition to that, one of the things that we found in looking at the MCAS data is in the computer-based model, some of the questions, especially some of the multiple choice questions, are requiring multiple responses. And I think what we're finding is we've been teaching our students that there is a best answer as opposed to a variety of answers that could best answer that question. And we believe that some of the numbers kind of reflect that. So we're still looking at the data and trying to understand that. We'll get a better idea from this year's MCAS, which will move from legacy into the computer model. And we'll be able to go through that data in the future. But knowing what we know from the middle school, we're trying to prepare our sophomores or freshmen for those types of questions. One of the things that we've talked about in the Science Department, and this kind of goes together with the vision of the graduate. You know, hopefully, we can find some professional development moving forward so that we can develop strategies and lessons that help increase students' understanding of the actual scientific applications and content that we're exposing students to. We'd like to expose them to more scientific data, terminology, diagrams that explain real-life science issues. And then hopefully, in being able to do that, the Abington students will be better prepared to discuss possible impacts in those science areas and also propose relative solutions to those problems. We have tried to, within the high school, and I believe this could be one of the topics for this evening, is my belief that we need to create some additional AP classes and hopefully some additional science-specific electives to better prepare us students to meet the vision of the graduate expectations. We feel that the vision of the graduate, some people look at it as a model of what students should be coming out of the high school with, as opposed to in the Science Department kind of has a view that we need to kind of keep our finger on the pulse of the science. And the vision of the graduate would be moving a little bit to meet that pulse as the science world changes. And then finally, we're learning, we're working with IDL people to build our abilities to be able to support our increasing English language learners more effectively in the sciences. So the second area in which I was asked to provide you some information and sorry, is to give an overview of student enrollment within the science classes at the high school. And I was asked to focus on the AP and honor level courses. So with that, because of that, I kind of focused on the junior and senior classes just because that's the area in which the honor classes and AP classes are offered. So this, this chart here kind of shows, we offer AP Biology at the moment. It's the only AP class that we do offer. We are proposing to offer AP Environmental Science, looking into next year. And the honor level courses, we offer Anatomy and Physiology, Environmental Science, Physics 1, and Chemistry Level 1. As you can see, fairly consistency consistent from 2019 through this current year, with a little bit of a jump in 2021. You know, we're fairly consistent that approximately, you know, 46 to 48% of the students on average will participate in honor level courses in the science realm. One of the things that we're doing is we're trying to push the rigor. So you'll notice in 2019, Chemistry Level 1, we had 21 students. And 2022, we have two students. And the reason for that difference is that we're trying to move some of the sophomores that we feel are capable of handling Chemistry Level 1 earlier than we did in the past, to have sophomores in the Chemistry Level 1. And our thought is that that would allow a bigger portion of the junior and senior class to participate in the honor level options that they have junior, senior year. AP data, so I focused on that. We're pretty proud of the fact that in 2021, we had nine students take the exam. The average score was above the global average. And we had a 100% hit and the nine students that took that class to score a three or above. Previous years, we had performed fairly well. In almost every instances, we've been above the global average and we've been above the state and global percentage. These numbers are a little bit different, especially last year, 2021. As you can see, we had 18 students in the class and we only had nine students take the test. And that was, that was specifically related to COVID. Both COVID and student expectations, some students felt that they could not score a three or higher for the credit, for the college credit, and chose to move in a different direction as far as not taking the test. We do anticipate, in talking with one of the staff members, the teacher of AP Biology, at the moment, we anticipate a high percentage test-taking for this year. Final area in which I was asked to talk about was, you know, how does, how do we advocate the different science courses within the high school and Science Department? And every year, and this is a conversation between teachers and students in the different classes, depending on the relationships that the science teachers will have with the particular students. It may even be more in-depth, talking about, you know, what they may want to study, what courses that would be most useful in that space. However, at the end of the day, and as much as we engage these students, there is an open enrollment period in which students, any student within Abington High School, the junior, senior status, can take an AP or honor level courses. Ultimately, the decision is theirs. And then finally, you know, each year, we sit down as a department, we review the offerings. And before student course selection actually happens, so as an example with a little bit of hope, you know, environmental AP will be on the agenda for the upcoming school year. So that is what I put together for you guys. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
I have a quick question, if that's okay. It's not necessarily specific to science. I just wanted to say thank you from teacher to teacher. I know science is super tough because so many kids, once you get up to the high school, the engagement and the interest level, you get kids who really love it and then kids who really struggle with it. So I know it's one of those classes that is really, really tough sometimes with the kids. So I appreciate that. I was just wondering, like I said, not specific to science, so I guess this I can put out to everybody who's presented. I know that we're reporting scores, the percent of students scoring threes and higher, which is awesome. I'm just wondering, since many colleges really only look at the fours and the fives, if at some point I can check in with you and the other departments and just see how our kids are doing in that range too, so that I could just see overall that breakdown of the threes, the fours and the fives. That would be awesome.
No, absolutely. That, I mean, I actually have some of the data here with me. So I could, I could share with you, at least last year out of the nine, all students were a three and one student was a four for last year's data. And I have all that data, so be more than happy to share that with you.
We can get that for all other departments too.
Thank you. And I have to say, I don't necessarily believe in all the AP numbers. I was just more for curiosity's sake and just to see overall how the kids are doing. So thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else have questions?
I do. Thank you for this. This is fabulous. Curious as to what you were, if you had ideas in mind for your science-specific electives? And just to talk a little bit about not only the ideas you have, but your target. We know that not every student who enters the high school Science Department is going to necessarily be interested in taking an AP path. So did you have ideas on what some of these future electives could potentially look like?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about them. We do have a couple of electives that I will say is mothballed, I guess, at the moment. That's part of the program of studies. But unfortunately, because of staffing and we haven't been able to offer the half-year courses. One is a current event technology class that students in the past appreciated and allows them to look at the different contemporary technologies that are coming out. And then we also had a mirrored half-year course so that we could offer five credits or a full year of science package, a current event science class. And again, those classes were similar in setup, but different in content. So they could take a half-year course that would take a look at some of the new science that's been developed or we could talk about the COVID, different vaccines, different viruses, what's, you know, how a wet market plays into that and the science behind that, et cetera, et cetera. So those, those are a couple that are there. We haven't really offered them the last couple of years just because of the amount of staffing and the increase of student capacity. You know, with the, with the influx of students, junior, senior classes going up to the 150 range, we've had to use staff members in the specific courses that we offer. We're also looking at adding a Level 2 Anatomy and Physiology class to take into account those students that have an interest in the areas of medical and health fields that may not necessarily be that honor level student. However, we still would like to expose those students as opposed to give them the impression that maybe that's not a direction that they can take. So that's currently what we have. Environmental AP class, and we currently offer Environmental Science and Earth Sciences as electives to juniors and seniors. But that's, that's currently where we are right now.
That sounds great. Thank you. And one more question, if I may. The, you had made note of or mention of future professional developments. Are there particular ones that you've already eyeballed? Or it's just, is there something potentially in the works that you could have come in to work with? Or is this just something that you're identifying as a need, but not quite sure?
It, it's kind of identified as a need and it's around, as I said, I kind of, I kind of look at it as tied to the vision of the graduate. As, you know, I, I just think that, okay. I, I look at the students of Abington High School and I think back at the business model. And, and in some ways, the students of Abington are a product. They, they, we're trying to create something that offers, and it, what am I looking for? An advantage and are a source to society. They're going to be an added value to the society. So the question becomes, from a vision of a graduate and science perspective, what are the scientific and technological needs of the, at that time? And therefore, as we take a look at, at those, those business needs like a product, you want to market your students to be able to provide that, that, fill that particular need. So that's kind of that professional development thesis that I'm suggesting as we go further into the vision of a graduate. You know, what do our students from a science point of view need to do to be a valued member of the community? And, and I think that is somewhat of a moving target, you know, every two to four years, in a sense, just because of how much science and technology is changing. So that, that's kind of where I was thinking on that, on that particular vein. So I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, and that was not an easy question. So no, this, this is good. And I think the only other thing is with the additional, the addition of a potential AP Environmental Science, are we looking at losing numbers out of the AP Bio? And do we have the staff to be able to do both?
Well, as a, speaking of the staff, as I said, we, I think we're professionally very mixed. And, and we have the privilege, in my opinion, of literally having an environmental scientist as part of our science staff. So to me, that's, that's a home run for, for, for her. And to answer your question, no, I think actually what it does is it allows a junior to maybe take AP Bio and a senior take AP Environmental Science. You know, I, I guess a student could take both APs during the same year if they're that aggressive and we'd be happy to support that. But at the moment, I don't think we'll take away from AP Bio. I, I think it will add to the offerings and potentially could increase the AP numbers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it very much. I thank you for coming and for presenting. And if we have any other follow-up questions, we'll be sure to get in touch with you.
Be more than happy to get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have the Abington Public Schools District Review.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes, okay, great. Over the district review that we have coming up. This year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has selected Abington Public Schools as one of the districts to go through the district review. And district reviews generally occur every few years for all the districts in the state of Massachusetts. And our last review was during the 2013-2014 school year. Basically, the district review is designed to examine our systems, policies and practices that basically drive the day-to-day work of our district as well as any other factors that might help to improve student performance or any outcomes. So the analysis of these systems, policies and practices include a focus on ways in which the district works to improve and promote equity for all of our students. We did ask the state to delay, to delay the district review because of the pandemic and the turbulence that the pandemic has caused over the past two years, but our request was denied. However, it is a process that does enable us as a district to reflect on the findings because it provides yet another opportunity to improve what we do for our kids. And the process involved basically includes examining paperwork and documents, conducting staff interviews and observing classrooms. So there are a total of six standards and 21 indicators that are nested into the standards. The standards include, one, leadership and governance; two, human resources and professional development; three, financial and asset management; four, curriculum and instruction; five, assessments; and six, student support. So we're currently waiting to hear when they're going to be arriving to conduct the interviews and the classroom observations, but we're anticipating sometime in April. And the results and the findings from the state will take approximately three to four months for the districts, once we receive that information, once it's complete. Any questions?
No.
Just wondering how this is different from Niask?
It's, Niask is for accreditation, predominantly for the high school level, whereas the district review is more of a pre-K through 12 review. And it, although the indicators are somewhat, I'm sorry, the standards are similar, there are some differences there to look at the overall district.
But they're looking for similar things, just this is K to 12 as a district and Niask, a high school. Similar couple of things that we'll glean from this?
Right. So, you know, in addition, it looks at things like district-wide leadership as opposed to, you know, just basically looking at high school leadership or what's going on for program of studies at the high school level. This looks at everything district-wide, so very similar categories.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then obviously, one is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the other one is. Niask is, yeah, Niask is New England Association of Schools and Colleges.
Shari, so they'll be going through, will they be going to all, like, do they definitely go to all the schools? I guess would be the question, or is it possible they only pick and choose which ones they go to, but they could go to all of them?
That's a great question. I don't have the answer to that yet. So as soon as I hear back from them, they'll be setting up interviews and observations for some time in April. And at that point, they'll let me know, you know, how many teachers, what buildings, what grade levels. And I'm just not sure if they're going to do every grade level, every building, or they're just going to randomly select maybe a few grades per building.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Do they stay? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, sorry. I'll jump in after. I just started.
No, no, it's okay. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, is it that, well, so I know that we don't know if they'll be going to all the schools. Will they also be asking for, will they be polling the community as well for community information?
That I don't have an answer to yet either. There is a possibility, depending on specifically what they want to look at, they could ask school committee for interviews as well. But as of right now, I believe it's just teachers, staff and administrators at this point. But if that doesn't change, we'll, we'll make up, we'll let everybody know.
When we've been through this before, they've done it both ways, depending on what their focus has been. Sometimes they do surveys and sometimes they don't. Sometimes they would do a public hearing and just they've done it differently, at different times.
Is this over like a few days, a week, a couple of weeks that they visit? Or is it just one day that they, you know, do everything, try to do everything?
So basically, there's going to be two sets. So they have about two to three days worth of interviews. And depending on when they're pulled, when they're doing other districts as well, they're going to try and do two to three days back-to-back. But sometimes it could be, they could come in one day, one week, and another day, another week. And then they'll set up two to three more days. Um, and then they'll set up two to three more days, uh, for classroom observations. So they'll be coming in for two, to collect two different sets of data.
When you say they, is it Jeffrey Riley himself or is it, it's, you know, people, well, like, who is it?
So it's, um, a specific department in DSE, which is, their department is district review. And there's also, um, they also have an outside consulting firm that does data analysis and research. Called Ayers, but I'm not sure exactly what it stands for at the moment, but I can look that up for you. So they're in a partnership that works together to, um, go into the different districts.
So that, um, consulting company will also be coming in with DSE?
Yes.
Okay, so can we have a school committee member present if need be?
Be a part, maybe you can be a part of the whole process, whatever.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Okay, maybe we can talk about, about that more in like February, March.
Sounds great.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to make sure the committee knew this was on the horizon. This is just the beginning.
Um, and I think the follow-up to that is, I see that there's, you mentioned the teacher interviews. Are teachers allowed to sign up for this or is this just, hey, you, we wanna talk to you?
I think for the most part, um, and I haven't had a conversation with Peter about this yet. But I think for the most part, it's gonna be, you know, we'll ask for volunteers who might wanna come in. Or if the state and Ayers wants to say, we specifically want to see, you know, this grade level or this teacher. I don't have all the facts on that yet. Um, they haven't reached out and I won't know probably closer until April.
Can I ask, you know, like, what is the outcome? Like, you know, with the other one, it's like accreditation, you're accredited, you're not accredited. What sort of comes out of this? Like, what if it's a bad outcome? What does that mean for the school? Is there like a probation that you're put on? Like, what, what is this all? What kind of weight does this carry?
Similar to Niasq, they write a list of accommodate, um, recommendations and accommodations. So, you know, they, um, they, or I say, I should say commendations or recommendations. So they tell you, you're doing these things really well and they say, you really got to update that policy. It's not compliant. Um, you've got the one from four years ago. Um, so. Depending what they find. So they randomly select different things, pieces of paper. But generally, it's, it's been voluntary in terms of, you know, what they, they'll say, can we talk to three special education teachers? Can we please talk to, um, a member of the, um, uh, parent professional tutor, uh, group? You know, they'll, they'll ask us to provide them, um, different people.
Thanks.
And then we ask people that, you know, would, would you wanna do this for us? So it's fairly painless. By say that, Sherry's collecting all of the paperwork.
Thanks, Sherry. Anyone else have questions? No? All right, well, that sounds awesome. Yeah, if you could, um, update it as maybe then in March and we could figure something out. Um, it's more information, that would be awesome.
We did ask it to wait. I wrote him, you know, a plea to wait. This is, this is the, you know, the last year, the last two years. You know, we don't need the extras, uh, and they said no. And so I think the best way to look at it is an opportunity to, to reflect and what do we need to do better? Um, you know, be, the process with, uh, you know, thoroughly.
I'm sure every other district is asking to, to be passed on this year too. So I guess someone's gonna do it.
We begin with the letter A in Abington, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, next up on the agenda is the report of the Abington High School Principal, uh, Mr. Born, um, and he's gonna be talking about the bridge block.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. So, uh, as I sent out on a newsletter of last week. That we are, um, modifying some of our bridge block, uh, protocols, starting on, well, not really quarter three. But starting next Tuesday, February first in quarter three. Um, in short, this is coming at the end of a deliberative process that we started really last March after our Niasq. Visit, which recommended that we formalize protocols for academic and social emotional intervention during the bridge block. So this would be part of us looking to formalize the academic protocols. Um, again, this deliberative process started with running, um, bridge block as the staff knew it from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, when it was piloted. For the first academic quarter, we conducted student survey data, staff, uh, input. And then what we are basically doing is creating a more targeted intervention time per department. Um, and so with five of our departments, um, the English, math, social studies, science and world language department. They will each have, um, a day where they have priority access to students they need for intervention. We are asking them to pull in a minimum of five students for intervention. Um, and that'll be on a rotating basis. Um, what that allows is for the teachers, based on their feedback, where currently the numbers are at fifteen. They're better able to provide that kind of shoulder-to-shoulder help for timely intervention in classes. Um, and it also puts them in a position where they don't have to compete with their colleagues in other departments. Um, so we are trying that as of next Tuesday. Um, I think the school committee members would know that the students had some concerns about this change. Um, and I do wanna say throughout the process of talking with them, uh, all last week, that after we've had conversations with them. Uh, it more in-depth, they're able to say, okay, I get it. They're kinda curious to see how it works at this point in time. So we are piloting this change. Obviously, we're doing it because we think it'll work. And we, what we're hoping works is that we're able to provide timely intervention for kids who need it. Um, and just kind of case in point, now that it is the year twenty twenty-two, we are working with the graduating class of twenty twenty-two. And we wanna make sure not just our seniors, but all our students are able to get the academic intervention they need. So they can pass their classes to either, um, stay on track with their academic projects as freshmen, sophomores or juniors. Or to stay with their cohort, or more importantly, to graduate in June. Um, so that would be the modifications to bridge block that we're making, starting for next Tuesday, the first.
Um, Jonathan, can you, if you don't mind, repeat real quick, the, um, the program, uh, studies like that you're gonna be doing that with? Like what, um, what classes again? I missed it. I'm sorry.
Right, yeah. Um, so the, the five departments that will have, and Wendy, I'm sorry if this is hard to. So there's, in a typical week, there's four bridge block days. And there's five departments that will rotate through, so it won't all happen in a week. But, um, so on February first, the math department, for example, will have priority. Then the next day will be English department, then the next day, social studies, then science and world language. And it will repeat over that time. Um, and just for clarity, we reached out to the wellness, performing arts, visual arts departments. Um, some of other folks and they said, no, we're kinda okay with our fifteen. We don't need that targeted piece. Um, and so that's why we selected those departments for the intervention.
Does anyone have questions? I know Danielle, you started this off, so. Is there anything, I, how are you, like, are you go-kay with this?
Um, I, I, I don't know. I didn't have any part of, of the bridge block piece. Um, as far as I can remember, but I just, I love that, that we're targeting, uh, the kids, getting them the help that they need. And, uh, I do, I do appreciate that we're, um, on, on paper, bridge block is, is such a, a good. A good thing for kids. And I know that some of the complaints before, I know that you said that some of the students were upset. Uh, to have it modified now, but there's also the others who, uh, when we implemented the program. Felt like it was more like another study and that there was almost too much time. So I, I do appreciate that we're kinda taking all kids into consideration. And that we're giving kids the time to get their work done and also, uh, tightening things up a little bit. To make sure that it is a bridge block and not just a, a second study. So that's great. I think it's fabulous.
Awesome. Sorry, it might have been Jackie. I apologize.
Can I ask? I would actually, yeah, I would like to hear what Ellie has to say. Actually, that was my question. What does Ellie think about this?
Um, so I was wondering, I heard that while the intervention blocks are running. There's gonna be another department closed for studies to have a study. Are we able to, are students able to book into those studies or is it just gonna be placed in there?
Yes, so at least for the first cycle, um, because we're not certain about our actual physical logistical. Capacity to drop one department down to five, if there's fifteen. It's a basic issue of simple math. Those ten kids need to go somewhere else. And so what we're doing for the first cycle is when the math department, for example, has their five kids for intervention. The English department might bump up to twenty-five. And what we're saying is it's not our expectation that the teacher provide intervention for twenty-five students. Especially because we know it's hard to do it for fifteen students, that that teacher would be running like a learning center that day. And that's fueled by a lot of our student responses who say they use bridge block really routinely for a place to sit down and get their work done. Um, however, if you wanted to see your English teacher, you could ask to be assigned in the study to that block. If you needed that teacher that day, we anticipate there's a likelihood we won't need to do that study piece. That we'll just have the math department at fifteen and everyone else will carry on as normal. And then what we're really doing is setting up a department to have priority access on a given day. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Just because some weeks we have only two bridge blocks a week. So, and like, I was like the second or third week, like, if you couldn't book into a study. Then you couldn't get social studies either day that week. So I just thought it'd be harder to see.
Yeah.
Teachers.
We do have an odd set of weeks for a bridge block, at least with the PD this Friday, a PD next Friday. And a wave week in between. Those things do interrupt our bridge blocks. So once we get into a more typical, you know, weekly schedule, I think we'll see a more even rotation of that. And again, you know, the bridge block, what we're really fond about it is for our students, for a variety of reasons, they capitalize on that time. Is after-school help, which is probably what, you know, people of my generation might be more into. It's hard for kids that have transportation needs, need to get right home, kids that work. Uh, uh, many of our students obviously are student athletes, so they wanna hustle off to practice. Um, so if a student can't see their teacher during bridge block, they're obviously still able to access them after school through email. Uh, or whatever methods, uh, they need, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, if I may, I just, I, um, I do know that there was a petition. Um, and I know that there was a lot of student concern, but I also know that, um. From what I understand, the student concerns were heard extraordinarily well-presented. Um, and valid points were made on all sides. And what I do love is the fact that the students brought their concerns forth. Administration gave the respect of sitting down, listening, um, and having some open discussion. And I think that was a huge lesson on both sides. Um, and that was such a, just a valuable tool, I think, for everybody. Um, and so I think there was a win here, even, you know, regardless of, of how it ends up in practice. Whether it needs to be changed again or not. Um, I just think the whole thing for as much of a discussion point as it was. Um, I appreciate the way that it was handled between the administration and the students.
Thank you, Heidi. I honestly was very proud of our kids that they organized and did that. It's, um, you know, many of them are just sheer months away from their post-high school life. And to see them practicing the things that we've told them about how to affect change in institutions was actually quite heartwarming. And I think also the way that they conducted themselves with civility to ask fact-finding questions and learn more. And to really create a dialogue, I appreciate it and I was very proud of those students. Um, Dr. Goncalves, I need to give her a shout out, created a, um, forum for the students to present their concerns and questions to me. And I thought we had a very rich dialogue that, like, I, I think you've heard Heidi and I hope to be the case, led to a, a greater understanding. Of why we're making this change, so.
I agree with all of that. Thank you, Heidi, for bringing that up. Um, I, yeah. There was a lot of concern at first, but I mean, I'm sure it can be modified if there's any issues and, uh, we'll see how it goes. And I really appreciate Dr. Goncalves, um, as well, getting him involved because, um, I think that eased a lot of the kids' concerns. Um, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I guess on that front too, I just wanna say, like, one of the things that's great about the high schools, the personal relationships we have with these students. Where I hope the students in particular that organize this felt comfortable talking to me before, during and after. Um, and that's one of the things we try to strive to at the high school too, is that open channel communication. So, thank you.
And that's what we like, is having approachable principals and vice principals. You're definitely that, at least I think so.
We try, we try.
Anyone else have questions about this bridge block? Well, because, uh, Mr. Born has other things to tell us about.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda I have is the program of studies. Uh, we've provided you with a memo of the approved changes by the Abington High School School Council to the program of studies. Um, these are obviously the substantive changes. All the twenty-ones, twenty-twos will be changed to twenty-two, twenty-threes. Um, so these would be the courses that we recommend being added to the program of studies. As a reminder, or, or maybe a first-time knowledge for school council members. Um, any course that we want to ever conceive of possibly offering at the high school must be in the program of studies. Um, just because a course is listed in the program of studies, it does not mean it will be offered in any given academic year. If a course is offered in any given academic year, that doesn't mean it's going to run. So I guess there were questions earlier, for example, about AP Environmental Science, which is on here. This allows us to offer it, to gauge student interest, to see if there's enough student interest to, to run it. And if we have enough staff and spaces, et cetera, to offer the course. So, um, just for full clarity, some of these courses may be in here as it's an idea. We wanna do them and get it in the books and once it's in, it's in. Um, and others, uh, might have a little bit more of immediate application. So starting us off is a, uh, combination, uh, class. That is a combination of our business department and visual arts department, which is small business, retail and graphic design. And this is combining students, uh, developing designing T-shirts as well as the marketing. Uh, it takes to figure out what students want, as well as the small business, uh, skills to then sell, manage the money. Uh, cost expenses, you name it. We feel this is a great opportunity for some practical, hands-on, uh, learning for our students. Um, in that combined class of the business and visual art department. Moving on to science, and you heard this from Mr. Kiderik earlier, this would be the addition of a level two offering of the anatomy and physiology class. Um, the description, um, stays very similar to the anatomy and physiology one class. Uh, again, the intent here is to just broaden the availability of this, uh, learning, uh, experience for students. That may be looking at a medical career or medical field after high school. But might not, um, feel like they're ready to perform at a level one, uh, level of expectations for class. Uh, as we've already mentioned, this would also, uh, Mr. Kiderik and the science department like to put forward. An advanced placement environmental science class, adding to our AP offerings. Um, and this would be, uh, obviously at an AP level, learning of environmental science, which we currently have. Excuse me, as an elective course in the school. And we do have a very knowledgeable staff member who, if we reached a number of students that validated running this section, would be. Um, already qualified to teach that course. Moving on, the academic support class, grades eleven, twelve, actually currently exists in the program of studies. The modification that we would recommend making is to add five credits to this class. Currently is an uncredited class. Um, the academic support grade nine and ten courses are credited at five credits per. Um, and those are services required to students by way of their individualized education programs that they have to take in their, um, in their schedules. And what we've noticed for some of our juniors and seniors that require that support, by having this class be uncredited. It creates a bit of a hole and a gap in their schedule, putting more of a premium on their other classes. It also doesn't necessarily honor the work that these students do with their liaisons on a day-to-day basis. Um, and our, two of our special educators, Mr. Siegel and Mr. Murphy, have spent the first half of this year developing a curriculum for this course. Which is basically about transition skills. This is life after high school, um, basic things, how to get a. Um, basic things, how to get a job, um, whether to buy, whether to rent, where to live. Um, and so it is a full curriculum that students would earn a grade for. So the recommendation would be to provide credits um, for that full-year class. Last but not least, for World Languages, uh, Ms. Grabowski in the World Language Department has added some language into the descriptors of the courses around federal and state standards. Um, and then also regarding um, some of the criteria from ACTVOL and other organizations. And then for the um, Spanish Four and Spanish Five course, this would be adding that the stamp tests that you, we may be more familiar with as a group, is a required feature of the learning class. Um, just so we know that that's not something you have to pass in order to get credit, we just want to make sure students know we want that performance data as part of uh, their learning journey. Um, the addition would be to create an advanced placement Spanish Language and Culture class. Um, this may run concurrently with the Spanish Five. Again, this will be driven by how many students are interested in this class. Um, whether it runs on its own, or whether it runs buddied up with the Spanish Five in the same period. The um, AP Spanish Language and Culture class also would require students to take the Seal of Biliteracy. Um, so that would, those would be the new courses or the adjustments we would make, I would recommend making to the Program of Studies for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Can I ask you a quick question? Um, what, like, is it, can it just pass very quickly? Um, I think you are between special education and world languages. You said something about on, at the federal level?
Uh, national. So there's some, just some national standards regarding the Spanish that are in there?
Okay.
So when, you know, as the committee deliberates on this, obviously, this is your, uh, you had, you had this in your packet, you you've got a Q and A tonight. If you feel comfortable voting it, that's great. If you want to wait until next time, because you've got, you know, additional questions we need to dig deeper, that's also fine. Just, I like to say that at the beginning.
I just had, I said one quick question, Jonathan. Um, regarding the requirement to take the stamp test, do you think that will have, I'm looking, I guess, your opinion basically. Do you think it'll have a negative impact on enrollment in that class, or more than likely not?
Uh, we don't think so. I think for me, just from, I don't even know the the right way to say this, we just want to make sure it's clear that it's an expectation of the course that you do this. Um, you know what I mean? Because I think we just want parents to know, um, as they sign their students up, that we will be providing this assessment. It's just more, as we've done it in a pilot sense, Chris, we would say, dear parents of ninth graders, your kid's going to be taking this test. This is just a way of saying, your kid will be taking this test in the Program of Studies.
Okay, was last, was, I I forget, Danielle, I can see your hand raised. I know you know these answers better than me. Was this the first time we did the stamp test? Was it last year?
So last school year, we piloted it with some of our uh, senior, junior, senior-level Spanish students uh, as a pilot. This fall, we administered it to our ninth graders. And what, and uh, Dr. Federowitz can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I believe the pattern is going to be, that we assess all our eighth graders in the stamp test. And then we, so like kind of a pre-test, so to speak, and then we will take uh, have those students, hopefully in a cohort, take the stamp test by the time they're either at Spanish Four, if that ends their journey through Spanish or Spanish Five slash AP, to just look at growth over time.
Okay, thanks.
And okay, if I jump in for one second, I was just gonna say that um, it hopefully shouldn't be considered as anything except positive uh, to have the kids do this, because there's, it, there's nothing punitive about it. The only thing that would come from it is is positive, being able to um, report their proficiency levels per the results of this to any future employers, any schools, even if they don't earn the seal, um, they'll still have their proficiency level that they can then include. Um, not that it carries any huge weight, but again, there's nothing punitive about it and should only be a positive, hopefully.
Thank you, Danielle. You said it more artfully than I would, as almost if you teach Spanish in a high school in Massachusetts. But yeah, it's uh, it is basically to provide that, that piece. You know, our students uh, worry about tests, right? And and we have very focused, concerned students. And we just wanted to reiterate that this is an assessment versus a test of pass, fail, or one, two, three, four, five, like college board. And this does relate to that Seal of Biliteracy, which is definitely an interest of ours, because we do know that that is one of the few recognized documented forms where someone can be certified as bi- uh, bilingual or trilingual um, in the state and as well as nationally. So it is definitely a piece where we want to encourage participation in that.
And if they don't do well on it, it doesn't go anywhere. It's the students' own business to do with what they want with that information.
Feedback. It's just data for feedback and and improvement. Um, and if a student is, for example, in Spanish Four as a junior, takes the seal and they know they need to get better at speaking, they can work on that with their teacher to then take it again as a senior in Spanish Five or AP, to hopefully earn that Seal of Biliteracy.
I'll, I'll say for my kids, you know, my two juniors took it last year, did not pass, but it actually motivated them. They're voluntarily taking it again this year, because they know what they have to work on. They may or may not pass. Definitely did not demotivate them from, you know, they're seniors now, they continued with Spanish. Um, you know, they'll take it, and if they do well on it, that's cool. But if not, you know, they don't feel any pressure about it. So I, I don't think it's bothering the students who have taken it or are planning to take it.
That, that seems to be the feedback we get from students that have taken it thus far.
And I have a, a question. It has to do with world language, but not necessarily the stamp test, other than I was thinking, I know that we had students take the stamp test um, in Spanish and Portuguese. I know that um, in previous meetings, there was a discussion about potentially adding uh, down the road, um, more world languages, particularly, I know Portuguese was mentioned. Forgive me if I should know this, and I don't, but do we already have that somewhere in the Program of Studies already? So that if we do add it down the road, it's already there, or is this something we need to look at adding?
It's actually a great question, Heidi. Um, I don't know if Portuguese is in there, but that would not be a difficult add. Um, I would say the greater challenging is the staffing and what I would say would be a responsible commitment by the, the town and the high school to offer any student that took Portuguese One, an opportunity to take Portuguese Two, so they could meet their state graduation requirements. Um, so it, it would be something that I could make a phone call and get a description of a Portuguese One class tomorrow, if needed. Um, but I just think we're a, a little bit away from having the staffing people, et cetera, in place to, to be able to offer that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, so we have to make a motion, or um, we have to approve this. May, um, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the revisions to the Abington High School's Program of Studies for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year as presented?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it. Take your pick, Teresa.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Mr. Born. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Um, so next we have the Report of the Director of Student Services for uh, with additional homeschool requests for the school year.
Yep, uh, yep. So the uh, um, the routine tonight is, is just as it usually is when we have these requests. Um, uh, so we've had a family who, um, over the course of the years, decided that it would be um, in their children's best interests to um, participate in a home-based program. Um, I've reviewed, reviewed their application materials and made sure it met, um, was consistent with our state standards and seemed sufficiently rigorous. Um, and so uh, my proposal to the committee is, is uh, is to recommend uh, recommend this program, and I'll just turn it over to you to um, to vote on it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, would anyone like to make a motion to approve uh, the additional home education programs for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year as recommended by Dr. Robbins?
Make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Dr. Robbins. Appreciate it. Um, so next up, we have the Report of the Superintendent of Schools, uh, which is the revisions to the Abington Middle School Assistant Principal Job Description.
So as you know, we're under a way with trying to find um, an assistant principal for Abington Middle School. In that process, discovered that this um, job description included that the um, assistant principal, it's, it's a teaching role, which it used to be at the Frollo. It is no longer a teaching role, so that has been eliminated from this. That is one change. The other change is that um, the length of the contract is now the regular contractual year uh, plus thirty days. Previously, it was shorter. So that's also been updated. And those are the only um, significant updates to this. And so I'd ask the committee to consider it, um, if, if, and when the committee feels comfortable.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
It doesn't delay or push back the process at all, does it? I'm guessing no, but I'm asking.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Just saw that it had a couple of things in there that were misleading. We wanted to make sure that it was um, better reflective of the process.
Okay.
Our, our resident school committee member, Heidi Hernandez, is a part of that process.
Well, it also had the words Frollo filtered through it. We figured it was probably time to update.
Just a little bit. Awesome. Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the Abington Middle School Assistant Principal Job Description as presented?
I'll make a motion. All motion.
Yeah.
Teresa, what?
Are we at all in favor, or are we at a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second. Second, yeah, first, second, whatever.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we have the Report of the Assistant Superintendent uh, with a COVID-nineteen update.
Good evening. We have some, um, we've uh, lots, lots of things to talk about tonight, including the new program uh, by the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health uh, regarding COVID testing. This afternoon, uh, through Constant Contact, we sent out an email describing in more detail uh, the, the new program. So it is an opt-in program. So families have the option to either join or not join. And if they do join the program, every two weeks, their student will bring home with them a um, COVID test kit that'll include two tests. And if they opt into the program, they're asked to uh, conduct a COVID test once a week using the test provided for their, on their student. If their student uh, tests negative, they're good to go. If they test positive, they're asked to uh, let the school know and follow the isolation protocols that go along uh, with a positive COVID test. And also asked to uh, to notify their healthcare provider. At this time, we believe that uh, that our test date will be on a Thursday. That way, we can get the tests into the district, disperse them out to the schools, to get them to the students, to bring home, to test on the Thursday. We also anticipate um, that we will receive the tests in the first week or two of February. And once we have the tests, they'll then be dispersed and we'll send out another email that uh, that the program is beginning. The other um, the other caveat to this program is that along with the in-home testing program, it also means that we're going to discontinue contact tracing and test, the test and stay program within the school. So regardless of how many uh, families uh, choose to opt in to the at-home testing program, once that program begins, we will not be doing contact tracing or the test and stay program. We will though, although, we will though, continue to do symptomatic testing of students and staff if um, in school, we'll still have that opportunity to do that if families um, opt uh, to have their student tested at um, at school. I also want to reiterate that this is a voluntary program that you can, you, an email was sent out today to opt into it. You can also opt in at any time, and you can opt out at any time. So um, can fill out the form, we're asking um, to, if you would like to opt in, to opt in by Friday, so that we can place our first order. But you can also opt in next week and be on the second, on the second round, um, on the second round of testing. And again, if at any time, you want to discontinue your um, involvement in the program, you can email us and we will um, just, and you can opt out. And I'm guessing there might be a couple of questions.
I have a few questions.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Can I just get one basic one in?
Yeah.
Um, Felicia is, so you, I think you answered one of them. You don't have to opt, like, you don't have to opt in, but even if you don't, test and stay for your kid is still not gonna ha, like, it's gone completely.
Correct.
Um, so you, it is, if you opted in, do you have to submit the, do you have to, like, is there a process to submit the results of the test?
Great question. So we're, you're asked, if you opt into the program, you're op, you're asked to report a positive test result to this, to us, and it'll go to the school nurse.
Yep.
That re, test result is not reported anywhere else except, except to the school nurse as an individual. We are asked still as an aggregate, like, the total number of positives that we have, we're asked to report that to the Department of Education, but not that Felice Michelle has tested positive this week.
Yep.
It's in the aggregate, not as an individual.
So I guess my question was more around, what if it's negative? Do you need to tell somebody that you tested negative?
Okay. Nope, you do not.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, so do you know how long, um, Felicia, how long this is gonna go for? Is it to the end of the school year? Is it next year?
Right, right now, the program is um, is scheduled to be from now till April, the end of April.
Okay, and then do we have any idea what's gonna happen after April?
We do not.
Okay. Um, and then the tests that are going to be used, I know that um, we were using um, different tests before, they were expired. Um, they weren't, they were FDA-approved just through, um, you know, because we were in a pandemic. Are these tests, I saw that they were FDA-approved, but are they just for emergency use approval, or do you know if they're actually approved?
Uh, so, my understanding is that these tests are all emergency use, use authorization. I just want to, I just want to say one thing, though. We have not, in the Abington Public Schools, used expired tests. We've used tests that their expiration date has been extended by the FDA. So the, we haven't used tests like that, the FDA and the DPH have said you can't use anymore. We've only used tests that we've been told we can continue to use.
Right, that they were expired, but then they added the dates.
Correct, but I just, I just wanted to be, I wanted to be clear that we as a, we used tests that we were told had been extended.
Right, no, I totally.
Okay, thank you.
I totally get that. And um, with the tests that we're using now, so I know that like some, um, some towns had, and districts had already discontinued um, test and stay because um, they were overwhelmed or, you know, whatever, have it. Um, there were quite a few towns like uh, two weeks ago, Solskjaer-Boteck was one of them, and King Philip for schools, Ashland, Shrewsbury, Hudson, Dedham. Um, so they've already stopped that test and stay. And do they also, they're going to be going on, Peter, to the new uh, program, right?
I don't, though, I, off of that list that you've listed, I'd imagine most of them are. I've been on calls with areas, schools, and, you know, um, contingent communities. And our, our neighbors are following the same process we are.
Okay, and are we all using the same tests?
Sorry?
Are, are all districts going to use the same? Because it's a different test than what we're using now for in-school, right? That is going to be used at home.
Correct, so.
Every district's using the same.
If the district's using the tests that are received by the, by the state, we will be using IHE, IHEC COVID-nineteen tests. I can speak for what we're receiving from the state. I'm, I don't, other, if other districts got tests in other ways, then they may be using different tests. But the state is providing all, if you're opting into this program with the state, then they'll be providing the same tests to those districts.
Okay. And then, Peter, I asked you earlier about the, um, if there were any issues with the tests. Do you know if we found out?
So by issues with the tests, I think you mean, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat it back to you, so I make sure I have your question right?
Well, I didn't really, so, um.
No question, you, you had asked me if
Earlier.
Uh, students were tested more than one time.
Yeah, in a day.
And Felicia?
So there have been instances that students have um, have been asked to retest, um, because results have been inconclusive, uh, and that happened. And that happens with tests. It could be because of sample collection errors, could be a test error. And students, there have been instances when students have been asked to to retest. I I don't, that in my, again, I'm not, my understanding is that happens. It can happen with a strep test. It can happen with other types of of tests that you can have an inconclusive test.
But do we think that that inconclusive test has anything to do with the expired being extended? Or is it more of the use in how many kids? Like, is it just a couple here and there? Or is it like daily? Or, you know what I mean? And is it more than twice that they would have to test? Is there anybody that has tested like three, four, or five times a day?
I asked, I asked that question and the answer I got was that they cannot remember anyone that was asked to test more than two times.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I mean, we've been there, you know, when they do this testing and you've got kids that are. I remember standing and doing the testing. I can't believe we're experiencing, I'm experiencing this my career and I thought about the poor kiddos who are experiencing it in their career as students. And you're looking at this little window and you're, you know, the nurses are trying really diligently to make sure that. Do they see the line or they don't see the line? And so out of, just to be cautious. They've asked, I think at times to to do it again because, you know, you, everybody, I think at this point, everybody's seen those little boxes. And you're trying to see the pink lines and make sure you got it right.
And that's the main thing is to get it right. And you can have an inconclusive test in, like Peter said, I mean, I've looked at plenty of them and like, oh, is there a line? I'm not sure. I'd rather retest than say it is or it isn't. And I've, I also, you know, today, one of the examples was those given if there's. Blood on the sample, that that could cause a test to be inconclusive or incorrect. For, and that's just one example. Did that answer?
Yes, I appreciate that. And do we know why we're moving from test and stay? Is it? The la, I know that, you know, it's said that there was like five hundred thousand tests and most of them were negative.
The reason is because this is what was been, this is what has been strongly recommended. And I'm using those two words. Because those are exactly the words that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health used when they made this recommendation to Desi. It strongly recommended that we move to this.
Right. I'm just wondering if we think it's odd that within just a few days of a lot of districts dropping out. And saying that they're not going to do this anymore, if that's the reason why they did this? Or if it's, you know, mostly because of there really weren't any close contacts that, you know, were affected by this.
I know for sure that our medical people, that our nurses are killing themselves. And they will do whatever is asked of them to provide the safest school environment possible. And so they made sure that it got done in Abington. You know, the test and stay and the quarantining.
I'm just wondering if you have any insight with Desi as to the change? No.
Did they call me and say, because test and stay isn't working, we're doing this? No.
I mean, Peter, the, I mean, what they, what they announced is what you have in terms of. Their reasoning for stopping test and stay is the overwhelming majority came back negative, right? I mean, I don't know. I'm probably layman terming it, but.
Yep. And and which is what, which is what we sent out and all that information. Yeah, thank you.
And then I know that there was a question from a parent about the. Moving around and at lunchtime and everything. So can we just clarify that? What's gonna happen with that and when that can start, where people can sit where they'd like or?
Yeah, it's a very good question. When are we gonna be able to relax some of the other mitigation things such as the seating at lunch? Just as soon as possible. And I don't know exactly when that is. So we came out of the holiday break. And we ran an attendance rate of about seventy-five percent of the faculty and staff and the student staff that were here. And then in the following week, it was about fifteen percent. Currently, we're running about ten percent out. Of the building. So I think I said those numbers the wrong way. I apologize. Twenty-five percent were out the week after the break. Then the week after that fifteen, we're currently, as of today, running at about ten percent-ish. We're just coming out of this spike. We are just implementing this new phase. Just as soon as possible, we want to, you know, move away from those. Mitigation factors that we have, but we don't wanna jump out of them. And, you know, I'd like, I'd like to make sure we're out of this spike and we implement this new program.
So if you say that we're in a spike, right, is like, how are we compared to past years during this time? No, no, no.
Coming out of it.
I'm just wondering like where we are compared to the past.
We generally run better than ninety-five percent of the people showing up. But we do have different colds and flus and seasonal events that it gets worse than that. So it's hard to compare this to those things. Because, I mean, different strains, COVID, different factors, so. I don't know that I'm qualified to compare those things.
Okay. Do we know the date that you're, that we're gonna get the tests? And like when, when the transition will happen? So if we get the test, are the, is the transition gonna happen like the following week or the next day? That they'll, the kids will get all of the tests? And then how will that coincide with the seating?
So we're hoping we get them the first week in February. We'll sort them and distribute them just as fast as possible, but. Box has to be delivered, box has to be open and right away, we'll, we'll get them out there, get them out to people. And I'm hopeful we'll be able to continue to make the adjustments that provide kids, you know. Less restrictions as to coincide with those things. But I don't know that for sure until we see the numbers continue hopefully to go in the right direction. I don't know when that happens until that, that happens, if that makes sense.
So everybody, so everybody knows though, you'll, when, whenever, whenever the test and stay and contact tracing. Ends, you'll send something out letting people know it is now done?
Correct.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. More, more information's gotta go home. So people know exactly the timing, what's going on just as soon as we can.
Once we have the tests in Abington, then we can, we'll have a much better idea of when that would happen.
I'm not looking for any data, just that whenever it is. We'll get, something will come out, that's all.
And another plug for people to sign up for Constant Contact because that's how information gets disseminated.
Can I just ask you one more question just to reiterate? So you said that, Peter, that. When the tests go home, the kids still though may be seating, sitting at their lunch tables. For a period of time.
I'm hopeful that the numbers will be down and we may be able to make that shift at that time, but I don't know it until we get to that time.
I, it's just been a big question with like some parents, especially the younger, the younger parents. So that's why I'm asking. So I appreciate that.
No, I I appreciate the question. It's a good question. I'm sorry that I can't say there's just this clear date. Again, I just, let's all hope that we continue to come out of this spike the way that we are. I don't know why we wouldn't the rest of, that's been the experience of other places around the world. So let's hope.
So if like by our next school committee meeting, do you expect us to be back on track? Like, I'm wondering if, do we set up a vote? Is this go through you? Does it go through the committee? Like on, you know, when, when this stops? Like, I just don't.
Yeah, we, we, I don't, where kids sit at lunch wouldn't go to the committee.
No, 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 I meant, I don't know what I mean. Like, just, I guess, just to say, okay, yeah, let's, let's move on. You know what I mean?
I'm hoping as soon as we get these tests, and the numbers will be down, it'll be, let's move on. I just can't say that until we get there.
Okay, thank you.
Because I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather say I don't know than pretend I know something and then flip flop on things. Changing.
Do building administrators have the leeway to, if they see, like. So. I I mean, I'm not, I'm no, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull back.
I can tell you, for example, though, I mean, there's, there's nothing to hide here. The high school's been less restrictive than at the elementary school. And we hope that, you know, the high school just went through a schedule change. We hope that we can continue to move in that direction just as soon as possible.
Anybody else? Sorry, last one, paper.
See something at, at the close of this piece? Quickly. I appreciate everybody's patience. I appreciate more than anything our students. Who we've, we've already said it here in three different conversations, how great our students are. I appreciate our faculty and staff. No school committee meeting, I think, happens without us acknowledging the work of our nurses. And I just wanna, I personally, I have one more person on that list, and that's Felicia. She's been outstanding and a rock. And I haven't said that enough at these meetings, so I wanted to say it tonight.
Thank you.
I second that.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're the best numbers girl I know. Thank you for everything you all do. Really appreciate it. I know, you know, everybody's on like different sides with this and everything, but nobody. Would ever say that the nurses and, you know, administration and teachers aren't really, you know, putting what they can into this. So we were definitely appreciate that. And on a really good note, we can say that New York stopped their mandates for masks. So that's exciting and maybe we'll be next. So if we have nothing else on that subject. Peter, do you have anything else to say about personal information that's coming out or?
I do not believe that I do. I don't. At the close of this, obviously, when the committee adjourns, I just, while you get a chance, there is a different link for us to go. That I sent through email, a Teams meeting for the, for the executive session.
Right. So then I will just let everybody know some dates to remember, which is Thursday, January twenty-seventh. Is National Honor Society induction ceremony. So congratulations to everybody that will be inducted. Friday, January twenty-eighth is an in-service early release day for students. Friday, February fourth is an in-service early release day. Monday, February twenty-first is President's Day, so all school offices and buildings will be closed. And Monday, February twenty-first through Friday, February twenty-fifth is the winter break. And then our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, February fifteenth at seven PM. I guess, location to be determined. So at this time, what we would ask, what I would ask for is a roll, roll call vote to go into. Executive session and close the, in order to talk about the open, the collective bargaining strategies. And not to return to regular session. Would anyone? Yes.
Yes.
I think I heard everybody say yes, Teresa. So we will adjourn this meeting.